May I have a motion that we only discuss those three items under for which we went into closed session? One item under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A one, discussion of a personnel issue. And two items under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A eight, consultation with legal counsel pertaining to a contractual matter and a consultation with legal counsel.
Amen.
Second, may I have a roll call for that, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Yes.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clums?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
All right, so let's see, is there any modifications to the session that anyone knows of? No, we will move on and we will welcome the guests and visitors tonight here and online. And then if you all would look over your June first twenty twenty one council meeting minutes for the consent agenda and if someone will make a motion to accept them.
So moved.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that one, please, sir?
Sure. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
East, yeah.
Mr. East?
Yes.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clums?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Okay, with that, then we'll move on to our presentations and we've got Pulaski on Main Projects Review. So we'll turn it over to you, man.
Good evening, how are we all doing today?
Good day.
Really good to be here. I would apologize for not hearing, but it's like this all the time, which is just a fact of life. I'm just a pretty face today. The real presenter is Ms. Tammy Parks here. She has done a tremendous amount of work for the love sign and through that she's learned a tremendous amount about welding. If you get a chance, you should ask her. We're only talking about the love sign and the two murals that we have the projects for. I think you're going to be very pleased with what you see today. Thank you. Hey, take your light.
Good evening.
Evening.
So nice to meet you. My name is Tammy Parks. I'm the art professor at New River Community College. I know some of you, meeting some of you again for the first time. I'm old school, so I had to bring my own visual aids. So there you go, surprise elf who left your presents. I'd just like to start by saying that I, what I've found in the past is when it comes to towns, if you paint it, if you sculpt it, if you art it in general, people will come, all right? Aesthetics are very important in a town. I've spent many months of research to figure out some of these projects that kind of got started, waylayed, changed, what have you. And so what I'm actually presenting is four projects to you today because we do need your approval. That way, before we keep going forward, that way you're, you're happy with the design and such. And so this is where we are. The first one, these are in order because I'm a little OCD for an artist. The first one is the love sign. It is popular for photos and tourism. It's to be located at the train station at that juncture between Washington and Door Highway. And that's probably another thing that I just want to reiterate and make sure is still approved. I believe where that little smallest tree was, they were going to leave it right there on the corner for selfies, camera moments, that sort of thing. There were a lot of job loss, partly due to COVID and there was a lot of changing. Town officials changed, the P O M director changed. So it's been, I, I spent quite a while just trying to figure out what's happening, what needs to be done and how we can get these projects finished. We need them and I'm excited. So we already spent, I think it was three years ago, they used the twelve hundred dollars of the state grant that comes for making these love signs. They bought supplies, in my opinion prematurely. They were waiting on a particular welder who I still don't even know who it was. He's a magician as well along with welder. My purpose is to bring before even estimate from Warren Crandall. He is a resident here. His mother works for Marketplace. He is the one who was given to me from all of the local welders who teach here, from both Pulaski County High School and from New River Community College. So Warren was their student both times. He then gave us an estimate and that would include to bring all of those materials that have been sitting at Cameron Logistics for two years that they almost threw away because they didn't remember what they were. Also provided the extra materials that were not purchased correctly because angle iron, I'm not going to bore you, but there were things that needed to come along with it to make a stable, good project. He's going to do everything to complete a two dimensional love sign. They changed this and made it three dimensional, but I think that is also you're asking for an insurance issue. It makes people unclimb it. Two dimensional is just as lovely, just as aesthetically pleasing and it will be just as large. Six foot tall letters, three foot, four foot wide letters corresponding to what needs to make it look like a good love sign. And he would do everything that needs to be done so that all it has to do is be connected to whatever concrete platform that is provided and created by the town because that would be you gentlemen and lady. Do the fact that, yes, you can't do that. So that is eighteen hundred and twenty dollars he would like to charge. That includes twenty eight hours at sixty five dollars an hour. Both the high school welding instructor and New River Community College refused, partly because it was very difficult in the beginning. The sign was way too large. We, we amended it. But also with COVID and classes, they cannot do this and they do not have the time. They would like to, but it's not possible. What you'll also see there is the estimate from B and B powder coating in Parisburg to both sandblast and powder coat the sign in four colors, which means that all of them, they won't have those unique extra little colors in it each state, but there will be a two dimensional element to each level, each letter, as in there'll be footprints that are actually two dimensional, paw prints.
You mean like with a relief, like?
Exactly.
It's a lot of depth, you know?
But with money, if we try to do all of these different colors, it's going to go way beyond a budget that anyone should approve. Does that make sense? So that is their estimate. There has been an anonymous donor from Pulaski on Main who has agreed that they would be willing for this love project specifically to donate a thousand dollars if the town will approve the rest of it, to get it finished, to get it done. Any questions?
I think it said the total budget for is twenty eight hundred and?
Yes, so with the eighteen twenty, the one thousand and then, yes.
And then if we would theoretically, we could, we, the idea is that the town would put the concrete?
I, I think logistically must be done because that is town property. You all will need to make those decisions, make sure it's secure. But, but Mr. Crandall will do everything up to that point.
Everything but bolting in the ground?
You're just ready to bolt in the ground.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Parks, the, the original plan, I don't know where that is currently, is that once the love sign was completed, the town would apply to the state for the grant that has been made available to every locality that put a love sign in place. Have you all looked at that?
That one, that was the other thing, the twelve hundred and fifty dollar was the grant and they spent it two years ago for the materials to make this thing. They, they, they spent lots to buy the materials. They spent more than just the twelve hundred and fifty allotted by the state for this project. They spent another four hundred that came out of pedal pusher money. I've learned so much.
I didn't think the state gave you the money until after the love sign was actually erected.
Not sure, but from my understanding, sixteen hundred dollars in materials was purchased and it sits at Cameron Logistics. So if you would please find out for me, I would love it. I assume the twelve fifty came from the state.
No, I think it came from another grant source, but I just wanted to check to see if you had knowledge of that grant because I've worked at another community before I came here. It was in line to do one and they were told that once you complete it, then you would get your money. So that's why I was just asking because maybe the rules have changed too.
No, it's a great question. I helped do the Draper one and that's how it worked. So I really, I assume the twelve fifty, but it may not. Maybe it came from some other pool.
All right, I'll be happy to check on that for both you and the council.
But yes, it should be twelve hundred and fifty dollars is given to this, which would be wonderful, that you get it after it's completed, okay? The flag design needs to be approved, as you can see, and there will be stencils, a relief fix facade. It will be a beautiful, wonderful project. I will make sure it is. Yay. Okay, there is an actual another one, pedal pushers. I don't know if you all remember this. This project never got finished. The only thing that apparently is holding this project up is there needs to be money paid for sandblasting and powder coating. Mr. Crandall was paid for the project and has the materials. But as an artist, I do not blame him. He could not get the people to talk to him. He couldn't get any validity of this is going to happen next and he was afraid to go on with the project if he didn't know it was going to get powder coated and sand blasted so it could be put outside, if that makes sense. So you'll see that estimate, it is for three hundred and thirty dollars from B and B powder coating.
And where were those bike racks to be placed?
Excellent. They were to be located at the train station and Calvy Park was what was decided earlier. But you are more than welcome to decide where you would like those two to go now.
How, how big are they now?
They are three foot by three foot each. They're not huge, but?
Do they, is it, is it like have a certain capacity?
I think it's about five when you think of, yes. I'd love to see more. The delay of course was that. Originally, if I may note and ask your all's opinion, originally the color green was chosen. And being an art professor, green blends and if you want to let bikers see things and know things are there, I would just recommend that you amend it and make it the town, the blue color of the town. That way it's not the cra, it's not the orange. It's not, yeah, that's a little harder, I think, even for me, but a bright blue would be bright and vibrant and it would mesh with everything else that you use as a town colors, okay? So please take that under advisement. Next, yay. I have spoken with Mr. Corbin. He's a very nice gentleman. This is the building that is located at the Route ninety nine entrance into the town at two thirty five East Main Street. There was some unhappiness in the past. I'm, I'm thinking with Mr. Corbin. He's been lovely and is very excited that we are going to bring New River Community College students to his place and do a mural. So he has seen it. The only discussion, I've made you all extra color copies so that you could really see each letter larger because they will be big. His only concern was the skater because he just was not aware of the skate park. And I thought that would be a wonderful element to include in it, especially because it's being constructed. So I advise him where the dirt has been pulled and where it's going to be located and that will also help let people know. There are going to be large swashes of bright colors that extend to the exit of the building. Does that make sense? So the entire wall as you come in, you can't see now because trees have been planted to hide it, totally respect. But we can then like top those little guys because it'll be something lovely and beautiful. The idea is that the letters will not change. They need to be generic enough. Notice the baseball collar. We're just doing green. We don't put anything other than peas. We don't want to keep reinventing this wheel every year. And so our painting class will complete this one in the spring of twenty two, at the end of the semester. So I will have students that are participating and doing it. Austin Strong, who's part of Pulaski on Main, he applied for a grant and we are hoping it's, it's in the pending stage. But for this mural and the one I'll talk about here in just a moment, we've requested seven thousand dollars. Part of that is for permanent scaffolding so we don't have to chase people down and we are comfortable with our, and we can work at any time we wish. It is through the Department of Housing and Community Development and everyone, please cross your fingers for us. That would be lovely. And that really, we have to have the money to do it. It's also a grant where we are matching the funds with all the service hours that our students will provide to the program, which is wonderful. So, um, yes, there's no, any questions about?
I do have a question for this person.
Yes.
I recall hearing something pre-COVID about having been awarded a grant for murals. Does that ring a bell?
What I have been told, so with subject to interpretation, is that part of Mr. Corbin's discontent with the town was that he was approached to have a mural put on his building. And then belatedly, once he agreed to that, he was told we couldn't put it on his building because the grant was funding something in the historic district of the downtown and that never happened.
Unfortunately, that grant was returned.
Yeah.
Oh, it was.
After some of us did a lot of research for it, but yes.
So it never happened because they couldn't find an appropriate location to meet the guidelines of the grant and his wasn't, didn't qualify because of location.
So he was mad he didn't get a mural. So now he's happy he's going to get a mural.
Mr. Corbin's building is looking, looking good. He's, he's.
And I said, he's, he's been lovely. He has been so excited and so other than just the skater, he just didn't know. And now he's like totally. One of the things we did want to talk about possibly is adding a couple of images to those bright areas like river turtles, things that can be painted over, it's changeable things. But anything that we do, we would bring once again, we wouldn't even have to meet with you. We would just bring you the images that we'd like to add to some of those bright colorful areas. Maybe a tie dye pig because he's been very kind to us, something cute and fun. Does that make sense? Any questions?
He's got to bring the restaurant with him though.
I'm good, I need some water here. Okay. Last but not least, I'm vested in this one because they chose my name. I came up with the Count's Crossing because I love that connection. The two, I'm so excited. All right. So this is going to be left, located, if you're walking through the gate, on the left hand side wall. The Boy Scouts were very kind to come in and start doing some repair work and cleaning up of the area. So we are going to, with the art department, this will probably be more than just one class. It'll be foundations as well. But we really actually want to turn this into a community project. The, the one we did on Washington was wonderful. Unfortunately, it never got prepared correctly. It's peeling off at the actual, that was not our paint. Ours was twenty five year forever. We do this once. It's a shame, but there's nothing can be done about it. We want to make sure we prepare this correctly. We want to do it once and it stays. But this would be a community program in which children, members of the, of, of the neighborhood will come out because if you all remember, no one ever touched that mural. In fact, neighbors came out and told us they would take care of that mural and wouldn't let anybody mess with it because they watched all the hours that kids came out and worked. So that's what we would like to do. So if you'll notice, that's going to be the foresting. And the idea behind that is it's an easy one to turn into a paint by number, if you all know what I mean. That way we can have all kinds of participation and my students can also come in and do the higher parts that they can't reach and any fixing of, if people don't know their paint by numbers very well, if they take that two to be a three, we can fix that. And so that's the idea and we just, of course, need that one approved as well. The idea behind all this, I hope you all, art never fails. If you have art in a location, it makes it attractive and it brings people here. And so that's the beginning of this. What we'd also like for you all to think about is we would start then, because these would be photo opportunities, we would create a stencil that could then be put on the, on the grounds near all of these objects, where to stand to take your selfie. And then another little camera, where to stand if you're taking a picture of people in front of the mural to really make it an interactive kind of experience. So I'm hoping also some of this extra metal that will be left over, we can also do some mini love signs. If you all noticed, they're popular everywhere. I know the high school wants to make one. I think it would be lovely to have more than just one love sign too, but we got to get this first. I want the big papa of all the signs finished. But any questions about any of those four?
I think it'll actually be your second one. Pulaski Theater has one over the door.
Yes, yes, yeah.
That they used.
Very good, very good. I love it, but?
But we need more of them, that's for sure.
I, I think, I think, I think Pulaski could be an art town. I think that is what could be the draw and that's what could change it all. But my information, if you'll see, is under the grant that we wrote out. You'll see my name and my contact information if you have any questions or concerns. Thanks so much for listening.
Ms. Parks, is the seventy two hundred, and I may have misunderstood, just for the mural on Mr. Corbin's building or not for both?
It's both murals.
Okay. And the grant that you have applied for is for how much? Does it have a matching?
No, it's, it's for that entire flat. The mashing was our community service hours to do it.
So your grant request is for seventy two hundred, which would cover both projects? Okay.
And then there, so there'd be scaffolding for that. So if we did more projects, it would just be materials.
That way we can make them self efficient because the college really wants to help. I'm lucky, welding would love to if this was my curriculum. I mean, I could actually put a mural painting component in the painting class where they're learning and it's, it's, it's part of the academic curriculum, so. That was with my high school students. Oh my gosh, so that was thirteen, fourteen years ago. And they never touched it. I mean, it just finally deteriorated because of sewage, but yeah. Thank you all so much.
Uh, just want to say one thing. Thank you all for having us. I don't stay, but I got to shut down the marketplace. I will leave. Thank you all for having us.
Go back to your chat. We'll do.
Y'all have a good day.
So we'll move on to appropriations over fiscal year of twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Resolution of the grading funds into the FY twenty twenty, twenty twenty one budget, resolution twenty twenty one dash twenty five.
Ms. Bertrand, are these the funds that were, the twenty, the two hundred and eighty thousand dollars? That's that money that was re, somehow reimbursed from some other?
It's a longstanding account that we had under something that's called LGIF. It was a local government investment fund that was started voluntarily and communities could contribute to it. It was out of sight, out of mind, drawing virtually no interest. And when we were looking at the issue for the overrun, our potential overrun in the sewer fund, that became the candidate and that is in fact here and I have advised you all, I think in an email, that we found three or four other smaller accounts that we have also now closed and put that money into the town's fund balance.
Great. So and then the thirty eight thousand just a reimbursement?
Yes. In the case of the CARES Act, most of our purchases had to be made through the county. We never appropriated money ourselves. But there were some purchases where the vendor required us to give a credit card in advance or something. And so this is the, what we think is the next to the last reimbursement from the county. We do still have one other project, but we have until the end of December of this year to seek reimbursement for that particular one. But we wanted to get this into this fiscal year because we did have those expenses in the current fiscal year.
Great. All right. So I move to approve resolution twenty twenty one dash twenty five as written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn, yes. Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clums? Mr. Clums?
He may have lost. We may have lost him.
Yeah.
Are you there, Tyler?
I'm here. I said, I, yeah.
Yes.
And Mr. Reese?
Yes.
All right, now we'll. Ordinance twenty twenty one dash thirteen, that's the ordinance setting the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two rate of taxation on real estate. Are there any questions?
I'm ready.
You want to go?
Spell like motion, we accept ours twenty twenty one dash thirteen, read.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clums?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Okay. Now we'll move on to the setting rates for all applicable general fund fees. So if we could have ordinance twenty twenty one dash fourteen, amending Article three, section seventy eight dash one oh two town of Pulaski Code of Ordinants, increasing the cigarette tax.
If there's no discussion, I'll, I'll move that we pass ordinance twenty twenty one dash fourteen as written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please, sir?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clums?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
And then we'll move to ordinance twenty twenty one dash one five. Ordinance setting the fee of for negotiable instruments deemed uncollectible. And if there's any discussion about that.
Just one quick question. When, when a bank, when it's returned to the town by a banking institution is uncollectible, is that just basically bank a voucher check that there's insufficient funds?
Yes.
Because I was thinking uncollectible meaning like they're just, you know, it's aged out or something like that. But just, it just means insufficient funds basically. Oh, so unless there's, that's mine on the question. Nobody else has anything? Move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty one dash fifteen as written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clums?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Ordinance twenty twenty one dash sixteen, ordinance amending the building permit fee scheduled to include reinspection fees. Is there any?
I move that we, I move that we adopt ordinance twenty twenty one dash sixteen as written.
Second, second.
Okay, and may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clums?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
And then we'll move to ordinance twenty twenty one dash seventeen. Ordinance amending section eighty two dash two one four of the town code for penalties for parking violations.
Ms. Bertrand, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
When it says no town auto license, does that mean like the town registration detail?
Yes.
Okay, that, it's just a little confused. So the license in that case, the detail is the license?
Yes, and?
That's the sort of official term?
Well, this is, we, this was drawn up based upon what your charges have been in terms of the definitions of the violations and then all of these fees that were, that are now scheduled to go to twenty five dollars were five dollars and have not been changed for at least ten years, if not longer. So it's kind of archaic language, but we just picked up what was there previously.
Okay.
And we can certainly clean that up.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should just, you know, because of like our current state license, I mean, it feels like that should be registration or something like that. I mean, whatever's the, just so that people understand when they get a ticket, what they, what they got a ticket for.
Right, well, if you all want to modify, you know, this ordinance to suggest that that should say no town vehicle or no town decal because actually it's not just on automobiles.
Right.
Decal is required on motorcycles and?
Trailers and other stuff like that. Yeah, I mean?
I would agree with that.
I, I just feel like if we're going to have tickets, it should be, people should be able to know what they got a ticket for.
Yes.
That's just, I feel like no reason to?
You're saying number nine?
Yeah, number nine and then number eleven too. So change auto license to decal. And then eleven is, when, is that registration or vice? I mean, I'm just curious. Because I mean, I assume if you don't have a, if you not, is it, you don't have plates or you just don't, I agree with an added date registration? I don't want to make police officers enforce law that I can't understand.
It would have to be parking without tags.
So wait, well, it would, I mean, you've done this, Mr. Radcliffe, what do you think it should be? Is that sufficiently clear for a?
Well, it says state license. It should be, it should say parking without current state tag registration.
So register, change the registration?
And that goes to your code enforcement officer can go back or police officer. That, that's the proper language I would ever say.
Okay, so tag, registration tags?
Or just state tag? Or is it called, it's a registration tag?
Yeah.
Because?
Current tag.
If you didn't have the tag on your car?
Yeah, one, and then there's also your inspection sticker. And actually I don't see anything on here that would speak to the inspection sticker.
Is, is the tag, is the, do you usually do that? Okay.
It, it probably should.
Say current tags or?
Current tags, state, it, current, state tags, current.
And inspection or inspection and or inspection?
And or inspection, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
If I'm not mistaken, if you go back in your code, that's what your code reflects, if I'm not mistaken.
It may be, and that code might be. That code section may not be updated.
So that would just say parking without a current state tag and or?
Inspection.
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 The rest of them seem straightforward enough.
And then earlier you would correct number nine to say no town decal. I wanna make sure.
Oh, yeah.
Got that correct, okay.
So can we move to have that as amended, or do you wanna redo it and do it next meeting, or?
I think you could amend the language because it, the really, the purpose of the ordinance is more related to the fines.
Right, okay.
Would you agree, Spencer? As long as.
Well.
We're talking about the fines, the penalties.
Well, but I think the fines relate to the, to the off offense.
Right.
And so if you're changing what the offense is, then you're, I mean, kinda two side, different sides of the same coin, would you say? I don't know. That's, it's an honest question.
Ms. Bircham?
You might wanna check with your current, uh, Chief of Police there. Get her to research. If we need to go back and change the language, then we can go back and do it. Uh, I, she may have something to reflect a little differently.
Well, we, I think we can do it as, as we have amended the language, and then if we need, if you need to change the language, and if it's, if it's just purely typographical, I think probably doesn't need it, but if it's substantive in any way.
To change, okay.
Yeah.
Maybe the best way to do it is just do it as written. Research it and clean it up and do it right, rather than maybe.
And may, and maybe, maybe hold off on, you know, enforcing those until we've got the language laid up. Or just be, give warnings.
Right.
Well, I think someone made the point, and it's a good one, that we need to really look at the legislation to see if the language and the legislations, legislation has changed over the years because these fines are so old that there may in fact have been some language changes, not just on those, but most of the others look pretty standard.
Yeah, but.
You pointed out too, that obviously could be interpreted differently.
I, I don't know that there's a sense of urgency. It seems to me if you just hold off until we, we get through and update, and then just, unless that creates a significant problem.
None of these represents a significant amount of revenue in the town budget that hopefully you will, uh, be adopting later in the meeting. Uh, but these fees will not go into effect until you all make that change. Otherwise, they'll stay at the five dollars for each of these that is now listed as twenty-five. So it's really whatever for the pleasure of the council is.
I think, I think I agree with Mr. East. Maybe just hold off and do it once and do it right.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I just don't feel comfortable. Even, I mean, even though it's minor changes, it sounds like there's some, some, some room to review and make sure we did it right.
A motion to table it? Move to table it until the next meeting?
Uh, which, what do you, what do we table?
Uh, ordinance twenty twenty-one at dash seventeen until we get further review of language and code provisions.
Second. Roll call. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clums?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eighteen. Ordinance amending the schedule of planning zoning fees for the town of Pulaski.
No discussion. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We accept orders twenty twenty-one dash eighteen.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please, sir?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clums?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Okay. Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six. Resolution setting forth the fees for miscellaneous charges and use of the train station.
Any questions on, you know, motion to, best res, resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six?
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clums?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
And now we'll move on to, for the setting of the rates of utility fees. So we'll do ordinance twenty twenty-one dash nineteen. Ordinance setting the schedule of charges for water service. Is there any discussion?
If there's no discussion, discussion, I move that we adopt ordinance twenty twenty-one dash nineteen as written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clums?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
And then the ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty. Ordinance setting charge for sewer service.
Let's be, let's, we, we accept ordinance twenty-one, twenty-one dash twenty.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please, sir?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clums?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Yes.
Okay. Move on to consideration of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two budget. So the resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-seven. Resolution adopting a budget establishing appropriations for the town of Pulaski, Virginia. General fund for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-one and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty-two, I'm sorry. Twenty twenty-two, I'm sorry.
I have one quick question on this. Are we, did we use all our brownfield grants? It says, it says zero under the EPA brownfields grants. I just noticed that right now, and I just, I thought we had some.
You do, but back in the fall, we removed things out of this budget and put them in separate grant funds.
Oh, I see. Oh, okay.
They go past a, a given fiscal year and.
That's like why the Radcliffe said zero and stuff like that. So they're, they're in a different, they're not in our fiscal year budget. They're in a special.
Yes.
Okay, I understand.
You will actually, at your next meeting, be appropriating, um, several individual grant accounts that are used by the police department that in the past have been.
I see.
In the operating budget. But again, because they have limited use, they will be coming to you as a separate number, but we needed to first adopt the budget to remove them before we'd have that. But you'll be seeing that every time we have a grant.
And that all, that all makes perfect sense. I just, I, I just was confused and I just didn't take that through. But thank you for clearing that up. That makes perfect sense. So if there are any, are there any other questions? So I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-seven, adopting the budget as written.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clums?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight. Resolution adopting a budget establishing appropriations for the town of Pulaski, Virginia. Water fund for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-one and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
No discussion? Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. We accept resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-eight.
Second.
And may I have a roll call for that, please?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clums?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-nine. Resolution adopting a budget establishing appropriations for the town of Pulaski, Virginia. Sewer fund for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-one and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-nine as written.
Second.
Okay, and may I have a roll call for that, please, sir?
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Clums?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Okay. And with that, we'll move on to our council comments. Um, Mr. Penn, do you have any comments today?
Uh, just one question. Tell me, are you aware of the, of the complaints about the water tower, about the old Bolden Alley?
Yes, sir.
We, we have complaints.
We are gonna make a, uh, probably a temporary repair, but that is one of the tanks that will come out of service when we do the Brookmont project. So you don't wanna invest a lot of money in it. Uh, one thing we did, excuse me, when we had a, an issue with the water, uh, in a part of the town, we did fill that tank higher than we normally do. And so the first step before we do any repairs is to lower the water level and see if that doesn't either stop or mitigate that leak. But given that within the next year, we're gonna be repla, taking that tank out of service, we don't wanna spend more money than we need to on it, but we're aware of it, yes, sir.
It's written twenty-four seven. Drawn over.
Mr. Reese?
Uh, I would just simply like to thank, uh, Ms. Bircham and, and the town staff, uh, for their, their hard work on the budget. It, I know it was a, a long process, um, but job well done.
Mr. Radcliffe?
I have to, you possibly have something. Uh, I, I remember, uh, Council, he said on the budget, a lot of hard work was with the staff. Uh, town management, they, they done a tremendous job. It's, uh, we're gonna move forward. But do, uh, one question, one thing, uh, maybe the town manager. Uh, council, take a look at, I had a request from a couple individuals in Northwood uh, to take a look at our golf cart. I know it was brought up a couple years ago, to allow golf carts, uh, certain parts of the town. I think under thirty-five mile an hour state allows that. Maybe go to the chief, your, uh, sis, or appointed chief there, let her do a little research. Haggards, dangers. I don't know. I don't own the one. But a couple people up in Northwood has some really nice ones. It's, uh, not just for elderly, but the young people, but a lot of the elderly get around a little better and do a car going to parks. I don't know. I'm just saying. But if you can maybe come back in several weeks, whatever.
Sure.
See you.
Mr. Clums, do you have any comments?
Nothing.
And Mr. Reese?
Uh, also wanna reiterate my, my thanks for the very hard work that went into the town budget. I know it was a long and arduous process and, um, very happy, um, with the outcome as far as the specificity, the attention to detail. Knowing it does feel like we really know where, where the money's going and where it's coming from. And, and I feel like that helps us make better decisions. Um, you know, we don't, we can't make the money appear, but if we, we know where it's going and what's gonna come up, but it, it feels better. It feels like we're, we're doing some, and having a lot of real substantial progress on projects that have been somewhat delayed, um, for lots of reasons. But, um, just very happy with that. So just wanted to say thank you.
Um, had people asking me again about, um, the deer population in town. Can we revisit that to see is there something that we can do as far as in limit archery or whatnot?
I know urban archery exists. We have that in the code.
I think we've done that years past.
It's a double edged sword, because you have to be very careful, um, where is allowed, uh, because of the potential. Um, but we'll certainly be happy to take a look at and bring back to you what is allowed and what particularly our public safety people think should be. Any, excuse me, restrictions that we might have if we were to enter in, into, you know, um, that situation. But I have been in communities that have used that, and there are advantages and disadvantages. And we'll certainly bring back all of that for your consideration.
If I recall, when we reviewed it last time, I mean, we're very limited as to where it's safe to do.
It's tough in a urban, which I would call, um, a town, in an urban area versus a more rural or suburban area. But we can certainly bring back what we do have and what we do know.
I think the, the real problem is, is people feeding. People, people self feeding, they just stop coming around. You cut off the food source.
Well, I think unfortunately, sometimes a year, the food's coming from the trees and you can't stop the acorns from coming down.
Plants, they love the plants.
They do your landscape, but not necessarily in the way you want it done, yeah.
Sure. They will wipe it. All right, now we'll move on to the managers' report, especially if you'd like.
Uh, just a couple of things. First of all, thank you, uh, for your attention during this difficult budget process. I do feel very good about the direction that we have put, uh, to the budget. And I'm hoping that next year, uh, you all will not find it dear as difficult, uh, a process as I know that it's been, and it's been a learning process for you all and me, uh, oftentimes at the same, uh, time. Because of the kind of time that we have spent, um, on the budget and, um, myself as well as others feeling like we have not been able to get out and really, um, see the community. I am starting tomorrow morning a series of tours of the town. And there will be, um, eleven of us on the senior van. And we're going to be, um, visiting over probably three different, uh, weeks. All areas of the town with notebooks in hand and pen and pencil to identify those issues that we think need to be addressed throughout the community. Um, and it will have as participants all of the department heads and a couple of the other senior staff. And, um, I have found these kind of tours to be very, very helpful, um, because we don't always see everything in our community. All of us tend to have, um, particular routes that we use, you know, going to work, to church, to take the kids to, uh, to school or to different kinds of practices. And I think it's a good exercise to get out and really see the town, um, and in a way that maybe we don't think about it. So if you hear that there were, you know, a, a dozen town employees riding around, uh, taking notes, it's true. I would, uh, mention that to you. Also, I would like to, um, just mention publicly that the town will be having a Fourth of July event on July the third. We will have a parade. It will be at eleven o'clock, uh, in the morning. Uh, we decided to do it on Saturday because the fourth being on a Sunday. Um, and we're hoping that that event will, uh, be well attended. Uh, we are soliciting interested parties to be participants in that parade. But we think it is time, uh, to start celebrating, uh, as we come out of the COVID issue. And we are, uh, planning a couple of special events, uh, in the community. Uh, we've had people come to us. The Cruisin', uh, will be going on, uh, later in the summer. Uh, we do have a, um, a march planned for, what's the date? The end of June?
I believe the twenty-sixth.
The twenty-sixth of June, uh, which is a pride, uh, walk in certain parts of the town. And the, um, Fine Arts Center is planning on several events this summer in Jackson Park. And we do expect others to be coming forward. Well, so we'll certainly keep you all and the community aware of that. And I would just remind people, because it's a new holiday in Virginia, uh, that this Friday, um, the governor of Virginia, uh, declared last year, uh, the holiday of Juneteenth. Um, and so offices will be closed. Um, and it will be a long weekend, one of very few that'll be coming up, uh, over the summer. But I just, uh, appreciate all the support that the town council and the staff have given me. Um, the end of this month marks. Um, the end of this month marks six months, um, in the position on a, there's never a permanent basis when you're a town manager, but, uh, on a full time basis, and I really feel like while we have addressed a lot, um, and experienced a lot of change, that it has been a positive effort, um, on the part of your staff as well, um, as the council, and I think people will feel better as we move into the next fiscal year. I would also just mention that, um, I today had, uh, a brief meeting with our sergeants in the police department, our interim police chief is doing a marvelous job, uh, we are, uh, moving forward, making a few changes, but also using the services of Mr. Goodman to do an evaluation, uh, of the police department, so that as I search for that next police chief, um, I'm as well versed as I can be in what the needs of the department are for the future, so I think everything is moving along in a, a nice direction and at the proper pace.
I, I wanna say, uh, uh, if you relate to the police department, I know, uh, Council East was really big on our bike patrol, I actually I've seen them about every day, especially at court. Please relay that down, uh, I've heard some citizens come in at court and making comments on it, that they've seen him out. So that's, that's a really positive thing that she's got going on there.
And we have some additional walking patrols that we have not had, uh, before as well, um, so we're getting out into the community, uh, I think the council is aware that, um, in the budget, I've returned the position of community relations officer, but it will be a civilian position, not a uniform position, because I think we've got to start with getting the community connected, reconnected again with our police department, and I think that's, that's done with a civilian as that first encounter. So we will be recruiting for that position, now that you've approved the budget, uh, we'll be recruiting for that position just as quickly as we can to start after the First of July.
I think that's really exciting for the community, we have, as Mr. Radcliffe said, we've, we've lobbied for this for, for a number of years. We've had our obstacles, so it's finally good to see it come to fruition. Very much appreciated.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I also mentioned, and I know this has been a long day for you all, we didn't actually get through all of the items for the closed session. Uh, so I will defer to the council, we could either go back in a closed session, or I'd be happy to add them to your agenda for the next meeting.
Move to, add them to the next meeting, would you?
Yeah, I think that's probably.
That's fine.
I don't think, I don't think I have the ability to pr- provide the necessary attention to it tonight. Whatever they are.
It's with that, it's just a reminder that July sixth, twenty twenty one will be our next count, town council meeting, closed session starts at five thirty, the public session starts at seven. And then July twentieth, twenty twenty one, uh, council work session, closed session at five, public session starts at six thirty. And if I have a motion, adjourn.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.